Good evening, everyone. This is the Acushnet School Committee meeting, welcome, of Tuesday, June 7th. And we're going to get our call this meeting to order. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcast. If you could please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Dr. Bailey. I'll have you begin our meeting this evening.
Yep, we begin tonight with the reorganization of the school committee. As you know, we do this, the meeting immediately following the election. So, we are looking to elect officers, and we will start with the chairperson.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jennifer Downing as Chair.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Vice Chair? Do you have a motion?
Actually, no, the chair has been nominated.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Happy to continue serving in this role. So, I would like to make a motion, actually, I think the I think the construction of our group is a good one right now. Consistency is good, continuity is sometimes good. So, I'd like to make a motion to, for Sarah Gomes to remain in her position as Vice Chair of the School Committee. I could put that motion forward.
I'll make a mo- I'll second. Want to make a motion?
Any discussion about the nomination?
Yeah.
Ron? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
And then we need we also need to reelect subcommittee assignments. So, we have, just as a reminder, we have budget negotiations, policy, the Old Colony Vocational Appointment Committee, SMEC representative, and then the MASC Mass Joint Conference Delegate alternate. So, if we could just open up for discussion about how everyone's feeling in their roles? Do they want to remain?
Jen, I'd like, I'd be glad to continue with the SMEC board and also the Old Colony.
Okay, and that's where you've been serving?
Yes.
Right, Mr. Tebs? Okay, great. So, if you could make a motion, then, to recommend that Mr. Tebs remain in his role as the SMEC representative in the Old Colony Vocational Appointment Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tebs, for continuing to serve in those roles. And then we also have budget negotiations, policy, MASC and MASC, MASC Joint Conference. As the School Committee Chair, I'm more than happy to remain in the role as the MASC Mass Joint Conference Delegate, if that works for the committee.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Then we have remaining the Budget Subcommittee and Negotiations and Policy. So, currently, we have Sarah Gomes and myself serving on the Budget Subcommittee. I'm happy to remain in that role. And if you are, Sarah, open that up for discussion amongst committee.
I'd just serve on either Budget or one of the other, you know, negotiations, whatever, you know, volunteering.
Yep. Okay, great. Any?
So, I would just say, so I'm on Budget and Policy.
Not Budget.
I'm sorry.
Negotiations and Policy.
Apologize. So, in terms of negotiations, I would be happy to stay there. I think we just had a pretty successful round of negotiations, and I think there's some longer-term priorities that we have that I'd like to see come to fruition there, if possible. So, happy to stay there, Policy, happy to, I don't know, is Mr. Howcroft on any? Are you on any committees?
No, I know, I was just on the Vocational Appointment Committee. It's only when I served this past year.
Yep. I do think it's probably a good idea for negotiations. We are currently serving on negotiations, and so to keep that continuity as we continue through this contract negotiations, because we still have two more contracts to negotiate, would probably be a good idea.
I'd like to I'd like to make a motion for Ron and Jen to stay on the Negotiations Committee, just because it's, again, with continuity. I think it's very important. So, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, great. And then we just have Budget Subcommittee.
I'd like to say that I would like to stay at Budget Subcommittee. That has been my pet here with the Acushnet School Systems. I think I've done a pretty good job making sure that our taxpayer money is put to good use and that negotiations and contracts are finally getting in order. So, I'd like to stay on that Budget Subcommittee.
I'll make a motion to approve Mrs. Gomes remaining on the Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Then we have one more appointment. So, we need one, a second member for the Budget Subcommittee meeting, Budget Subcommittee. So, opening that up for discussion.
Stoney, are you open to having Mr. Howcroft step into that role for a little bit?
I am, but I want to open that up to other committee members.
I would like to ask, Ron, how are you doing with Policy?
I would be happy to let someone step into the Policy Subcommittee. I hope that's of interest to you, Mr. Howcroft, but happy to stay, but happy to let that go too.
I'd like to, since I've been a budget person all my professional career, I'd like to just, you know, continue in that.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to recommend Mr. Howcroft take on a seat on the Budget Subcommittee.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? Okay, great.
If Miss, if you don't want to continue in the Policy, I'd be glad to step in that role. It's entirely up to you.
I'd be happy. Please step into it. Not that I don't want it, but I'd like to share it with you.
Who's currently?
I am.
Okay, so Sarah and Ron. Okay. So, it would now just switch. Okay. So, want to make that motion?
I will. So, we'll make a motion to have Mr. Tebs become the member of the Policy Subcommittee with Mrs. Gomes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Question?
Any discussion?
Do we foresee any potential conflicts?
Conflicts. I did have that thought.
I think that came up last night, because I can almost recall saying that.
There may be situations where you may have to recuse.
But then we won't have a quorum.
Now we've got one.
Yeah, we don't have a quorum then for a Subcommittee. Sorry, Ron.
You can have to remain.
I'm going to withdraw my
But I think John raises a good point in, do I have a conflict with that?
Yeah.
What about?
In full disclosure, my wife works in the cafeteria staff.
Yep, yep. I can step on the Policy. I mean, I'm stepping off of Budget Subcommittee, so I could step onto Policy to, you know, to address that. So.
Can I nominate myself?
I'll make a motion for Policy Subcommittee, Ms. Gomes and Ms. Downing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, looks like we're unanimous. Thank you. I think we've covered all our bases.
Nope.
No?
We need two more delegates for the Old Colony Committee. We had three last year.
Okay.
It was myself, John, and Ron, right?
I'll remain, you know, if you need.
Okay. That would be great.
If somebody, I don't think we had a meeting this year.
Right.
It's not a heavy lift, that committee. Right.
I'll stay on it as well.
Okay. So, we are making a motion here, then, to fill the remaining spots on the Old Colony Vocational Appointment Committee with Mr. Howcroft and Mrs. Gomes.
And who was the other person?
John Tebs.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. I think this covers everything now, right? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. All right. And so, we'll move into approval of minutes, payroll and warrants. I can request a motion, please, just of the approval of the payroll and warrants. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Moving into delegation, do we have anybody who's spending these? Not tonight, okay?
Oh, wait a second.
Oh, we do have someone?
She hadn't signed the paper. We'll get them out.
It's fine.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Caballo.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. I didn't realize I had to sign in.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, School Committee Members, Dr. Bailey, Mrs. Benavides, my name is Lisa Caballo. I am the Teachers Association President, but my most important job here is actually a kindergarten and first grade special ed teacher. As we know, the past several years have been once filled with many challenges that were worsened by COVID and caused the morale to be less than optimal. Our staff here at Acushnet Public Schools has always risen to the challenge to do what is best for our students and their families. I'm proud to see the work and dedication that our staff has shown over the past several years in spite of the challenges we have all faced. In my time at AES, I have had 16 principals and 16 assistant principals, which leads me to why I'm here tonight. This past school year, as I started with my 16th set of administrators, coming off a very difficult year, we started the school year with trepidation and nervousness as to what new demands and changes would be heading our way, as this is always what happens when new administration joins our team. But Leah Chesney and Julie Pacetto have been nothing sure of exactly what our district and school have needed. They both possess the qualities to lead our school in the right direction. In a short time, they have rebuilt the morale and trust that was so sadly broken in our school. Teachers and students are learning and having fun again. Teachers are laughing in the hallways. They're being listened to for the professionals that they are. Not only are they being listened to, but they are actually being heard. There is an equal buy-in to do what is best for our students. Weekly meetings are being had between admin and teachers, working together to bridge the learning gap. Getting the materials and tools needed to be successful in the classroom is happening again. Teachers are feeling valued and respected, supported, and cared about. When teachers are happy, so are students. So, not only do these two women support our teachers, they support our students. From Karaoke Fridays to Karate Math, we have an MCAS rally, the after-school program, and the talent show. I really wish you could have been at that talent show. It was our first time back together since COVID. The energy in that cafeteria was unbelievable. Everybody cheering their peers on, it was just totally restores your faith back into why we are actually all here. They believe in the whole student, and they encourage the start of an after-school program. These two women are always making decisions in regards to what is best for students as well as teachers. In one school year, they have improved the morale tremendously. In my 26 years, it has never been so good. I'm not the only one who feels like this. I have some quotes from one of the kindergarten teachers. They listen and they make decisions based on feedback and logic. A first-grade teacher stated, "I love that Julie and Leah are so caring and understanding. When there's a problem, it's so easy to go and talk to them. They care what the staff has to say, and feedback is actually valued. They have changed this building in such a positive way." One of the specialists has told me that she sees more smiling and laughing in the hallways more than she ever has, and that they bring a positive energy to the building, just like we saw at the talent show. Similar happenings, sorry, I know I'm over the three minutes, but thanks. Similar happenings have been going on at Ford. Teachers are happy with the team building that has been going on this year, the PBIS incentives, such as having Eric Demers come back and support his alma mater, and the cookie decorating. New teachers have expressed how welcoming the staff and admin have been, and teachers are happy with the SEL groupings and bonds that have been able to be built with their students this school year. Several teachers have expressed what a wonderful addition Kyle has also been to the administration staff. So, administrators, along with new staff and veteran staff, have come together to create initiatives and programs to make Acushnet Public Schools amazing. Staff breakfast, shout-outs, celebrations, rallies and assemblies, morning greetings, conversations, PBIS, karaoke, are some of the many things that have brought laughter, care, and lightness to the Acushnet Public Schools. These things and more make walking through the doors from Monday through Friday way more enjoyable. Simply put, storm clouds have passed and the sun is shining brightly. Dr. Bailey, you're right, hiring is so very important. Leah, Julie, Kyla, Michelle, you have brought back fun, compassion, empathy, understanding, laughter, and a sense of belonging for all. So, I just wanted to share that with you all, because usually I just come with some things that aren't going so well, and I just wanted to know how wonderful things are moving for us. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. It's great to hear.
Thank you for allowing her more than the three minutes. Can't cut Lisa off.
Well, you know, I'll take a big sigh of relief, because I'm here to just speak about the retirees this evening. It came to my attention on the recent agenda that there were a number of retirees, so I thought it was important to stop by and wish them well. For the record, my name is Christopher Oliver, a former 17-year member of the Acushnet Public Schools, as well as a student who graduated here. It's been brought to my attention recently that several long-term faculty and staff of the Acushnet Public School System will be retiring at the close of the school year. Even though I have not worked with these individuals in several months, it goes without saying that I've made several bonds with many of these retirees over the course of my tenure here in Acushnet. I can say without a doubt, you all have a special place in my heart. Jody Bowles, Barbara Violet, Melissa Farland, Brenda Smith, Jean Sheridan, and Kathy Shabett. I cannot say how happy that our paths crossed during our time in Acushnet. I've had the opportunity to watch you grow and affect so many students during your time here. I have the utmost respect for this group of faculty and staff and wish you nothing but success in your retirement. Kathy Shabett, who I got to know the most during our time together. I am so proud of your accomplishments here at the Acushnet Public Schools. I hired Kathy five years ago to become our data specialist, and literally, our first job is to migrate the district over to a new student management system. While she wasn't particularly keen on my request, she completed it with grace and a sense of achievement. Kathy knew the district would be better off with a new system. Kind, thoughtful, and caring are just a few words that I would use to describe Kathy Shabett. If you are interacting with Kathy and not taking something positive away from the conversation, you are missing something. Jean Sheridan, my partner in crime. I watched you single-handedly turn our nutrition program into a top-notch department. It was always a pleasure to watch you multitask and keep your staff to the best of your ability. Thank you, Jean. The Acushnet Nutrition Program is being left in a much better place than you found it. I'm thrilled that you'll be staying on in my hometown of Dartmouth as a nutrition director there. While it's sad to see so many of you go, you deserve it, especially after these last several years. Congratulations on your retirement, and enjoy every minute of it. Thank you, committee.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Okay, so, we'll move into old business. Invite Kim Betancourt to discuss the COVID update.
So, I know there's been questions this week with all the press around COVID testing stopping and no more test kits, so I just wanted to really come and answer any questions and let you know that the plan for Acushnet is to discontinue the COVID program, testing program, at the end of the school year, as is Nup Jesse's intention. We have ordered enough test kits to get us through the end of this year, as well as through the summer program. Those did come in, and those will be distributed in the next couple of weeks. Anyone that's here for a summer program has the opportunity to take test kits home. We'll be doing that, just as we did during the school year. So, I didn't know if there were any particular questions. It's kind of cut and dry.
Yeah, thanks for the update. I don't have a question.
Are we still going to receive those reports every week, or is that going away as well?
The last day of school will be the end of our COVID reporting, so parents will not have to report cases to us. Won't be tracking.
So, we've had a large focus, obviously, the last few years on COVID, but the updates that parents will get moving forward will be focused more on the teaching and learning as we move forward, even though we have not lost that focus. We've continued the work during COVID, as you know. But I do send out a weekly letter right now to let parents know the numbers, but those we plan to end at the end of the school year.
I just want, I pulled some reports today, just to share, so that you number people. I know you like your data. So, as a district, we did 525 onsite tests this school year. That was 298 school days that were saved by doing tests and study. And we gave out a total of 7,020 at-home antigen test kits.
Wow.
So, that was quite a bit, quite a bit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Kim.
Your business?
Okay, moving on. The personnel report is in your packet. You'll see that we have added two new staff members. We had two resignations, one retirement, and one termination. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. I'd like to recognize our retirees tonight. We have Jody Bowles, Barbara Violet, Melissa Farland, Brenda Smith, Jean Sheridan, and Catherine Shabett, who have decided to retire. It's bittersweet, not all of them could be here with us tonight, but I'd like to call up Mrs. Chesney, who will speak on behalf of her staff retiring.
Madam Chairperson, School Committee Members, Dr. Bailey, Ms. Benavides, thank you for having me here to speak about Jody Bowles. So, I actually found a poem that I thought really kind of fit. I did not write it. It's written by someone named Wendy Houston, but I did make a couple of changes. So, I'm going to read that. No bells to alarm, no papers to correct, no parents to charm, nor money to collect. No mindless repetition, no children left behind, no scolding admonitions, no young minds to refine, no discipline forms to fill, no watching out for bullies, no walking up the hill, no cold morning duties, no Chromebooks, no calming kindergarten spheres. From special ed and IEPs to stat meetings in tears, whatever the powers that be contrived, you put in the hours and somehow survived. Amidst Alice procedures and Lexia and Freckle correcting bad habits, the occasional heckle, I had to stretch for that one. You still found time to give a smile, a nod, a touch, a compliment, or high-five, things that meant so much to a struggling girl or boy. Now you have done your best, time to go out and enjoy, or maybe even get some rest. But this is not the end. Bells will continue to ring, and surely you, my friend, will be reminded each spring that the seeds of wisdom you've sown will become fruitful trees, and in turn, when full grown, will replant those same seeds. So, I know I've only been working with Jody for a year, but even in her last year before retirement, she really has been dedicated to ensuring that her students are well-prepared for first grade, and so I just want to wish her congratulations. And I know I speak for all of us at AES, and I say you really will be missed.
Could we have her come up or to the podium? I don't know if she wants to say a few words. You're welcome to, you don't have to.
Just thank you for the 27 years.
27 years, a lot to applaud. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your dedication to the district. It's a long time to be in one place, but we've been fortunate to have you, so thank you so much, and good luck in this next phase.
Okay, Mrs. Sylvia?
I thank you. My retirees did not come tonight. They are at a basketball game. Mrs. Violet is moving, and she's packing, and she's yard sailing. And Mrs. Smith would be too emotional. And she really is not going very far. Her grandson is coming up to the middle school next year. But with the three of them, no matter what I ask, they do for us. And last year, through COVID, didn't faze them. They stayed on, finished the COVID year, finished this year, and now they're retiring to get some rest. So, we are very thankful for Mrs. Farland and Mrs. Violet. They are two paraprofessionals that know this building inside and out. Mrs. Smith also has been building in various locations. And I do believe next year, we might have Mrs. Violet in the cafeteria serving food. I don't know.
I hadn't heard about that one.
That just came up today, I think.
That would be great, because I have to say one thing about Ms. Violet is, since the day I walked in this district, she greets everyone at that door in the morning with the brightest smile. She is so friendly, and what a better place for her to be than in our cafeteria, so bring it.
So, I thank you to Brenda Smith, to Melissa Farland, and to Barbara Violet for all of your years of service here, the Acushnet Public Schools. Thank you.
So, next up, we have Kathy Shabett, who surprised us with her retirement only a week ago. But we understand, she was hired in 2005 as a part-time secretary. In 2007, she became a full-time secretary at the Ford Middle School. And then in 2017, she became the District Registrar/Data Analysis. And since 2021, she has remained a data analyst. But I can tell you that Kathy Shabett is extremely caring towards her coworkers. She knows all of the families and students. I mean, she's always been the first point of contact. She's always willing to stay late to finish her work. I see her here after hours all the time, and I really sincerely appreciate your dedication and your commitment to the Acushnet Public Schools. And I would like to give you, Kathy, the opportunity, if you want, to go to the podium and say a few words. You're welcome to, or you can say it from there.
Dr. Bailey, can I say something first?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I have to personally thank Kathy. This is my third year here in the district, and being the Student Services Director, we did a lot of reorganization, so a lot of things ended up in our office, including registration. We went from taking registration to online registration to my secretary being out, so I'm doing registration. And if it wasn't for Kathy and her positive attitude and her constant, yes, I can do that, I might not know how, but I'll figure it out, and we can do it together. So, I just want to personally say thank you, Kathy, because I was, I sat at my desk for about five minutes yesterday, when she told me, and I said, oh, my God, what am I going to do now? He's leaving me. But I know she's a phone call away if I didn't mean anything, so I really appreciate that, and I want to make sure I said thank you.
And I truly believe that phone call away, she's already offered her services, you know, as long as we've needed her, but would you like to say a few words or anything?
No. Well. I'm sorry, I'm numb.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Very much appreciated, and you will be getting a gift soon, since you just told us last week. The next person I'd like to recognize is our nutrition director, Jean Sheridan. In 2016, Jean was named the Massachusetts School Nutrition Director of the Year. She was then entered into and was chosen as Northeast Regional Director of the Year. As Northeastern Regional Director of the Year, she represented the states of Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, New York, and New Jersey, and Pennsylvania at the national level. This is certainly a huge accomplishment that most school nutrition directors would only dream about. And I could go on and on about Mrs. Sheridan, but what I will say is, as a superintendent, I never had to worry at all about our nutrition program and the food service and the way the cafeteria is organized and managed, and that's because of Jean's leadership. So from the bottom of my heart, you will be missed. I want to thank you for all of your years of service here, and congratulations. And she just had her second grandbaby yesterday, right?
Last night.
Last night. So you will have time to, more time to spend with the grandbaby, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Hey, I hadn't planned on speaking, but I don't have a problem. Wanted to thank the great CAF staff that we have. You know, over the years that I've been here, it's been a wonderful treat to watch them grow, to know that we've got a succession plan in place that as, you know, going forward, the food service program will do nothing but fly. It's been a pleasure to serve you and your children, we've had fun, we are in a great financial place, which is not something we've ever said, and we won't say out loud because it's not in the general fund, it's in the revolving fund. You know, it's not touchable, but again, thank you for the pleasure of being able to serve your kids.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck to you both, thank you.
And, you know, the staff had a nice time, a party on Friday evening where they were celebrated, and again, I want to thank them all for the years of service and their dedication to the Akushnet Public Schools, so thank you all so much. Next on the agenda is our technology surplus, and you will see that if there's no discussion, we just need a vote so that we can put that into surplus. And if you have any questions, you can let me know, or Angie, but Gary is also here. Any questions on the surplus?
I don't have any questions, any questions?
No.
So I would just need the motion to accept the surplus list.
If I could request a motion, please, to accept the technology surplus?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Juneteenth holidays, you know that's a new federal holiday.
You missed us.
Oh, SNEC rental.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
SNEC. In your packet, you have the SNEC rental agreement. The collaborative would like to add two additional classrooms and rent out two additional spaces. I have talked to the middle school principal, vetted it out through the administration at the school, they have the space. So in your packet, it talks about the agreement. I would need the school committee chairperson to sign that agreement tonight if the committee is in agreement. But I know that Mr. Teves is on the board, that rate is set by the board so that all the, my understanding is so that all the collaboratives have a set rate. So that's where the amount came from. Does anybody have, and these will be two language-based classrooms that will be right within our academic wing with the other students, they'll mix right in. So we're more than happy to have them, we already have a couple of classrooms from the collaborative, and it's worked out beautifully, no issues at all.
Yeah, it's my, it's my understanding that we're not going to be the only district that they're looking at as well, so I think this is an opportunity for the district. I also know that this, I believe these particular classrooms may be able to take on, I guess there's an initiative from DESI to begin looking at learning disabilities a little bit differently, some of them such as dyslexia, for example. And I think these classrooms are going to be dedicated to those types of services, which is nice because they've never really recognized those as, you know, disabilities that would receive these services. So I think it's a great opportunity for our district.
Great.
And I think another reason why they like, or looking at the Ford Middle School is our middle school is grades five through eight, so there's such a need right now in the region for these language-based classrooms that Mr. Teves referred to, and they would be able to put students in those classrooms, grades five through eight, because that's what the middle school building represents here.
Their funding is going to be for, I believe, three to six students in each of these classrooms, so it's really small.
Yeah. That was my question. Great, okay, if I could request a motion, please, to approve the SNEC rental agreement that will be in effect from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just a, just a quick question. So the children that are going into these classrooms, it's based on languages, dyslexia, they're not high, high-y needs?
These students are intellectually higher. They're language-based students. As I said, they will mix right in with our academic wing, they won't be separated, they're higher functioning. I don't know if, is that cool, intellectually, they're higher functioning.
Yeah, so these are students who don't have any cognitive or intellectual impairment, just a language disability, which is under a specific learning disability category. So a lot of speech and language, and a lot of, you know, as Mr. Teves was saying, a lot of students probably with dyslexia. The nice thing for our district is it's also a feeder for us, because we do have students who require that type of program, and they just don't exist. So having, you know, a program in our own district would be wonderful for us to be able to also refer to if we need.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, pass this out of post.
Okay, Juneteenth holiday, as you know, it's a new federal holiday. We are currently in negotiations and have talked about this issue in the upcoming negotiations, but that is effective July and onward. I am asking the committee to consider paying our hourly employees for this school year for this Juneteenth holiday. It is budgeted. If not, they go without a day of pay for this year. And I'm asking for this year only because, as I said, this has been a discussion topic in our negotiations. So I'm asking for the committee to allow us to pay our hourly employees for the Juneteenth holiday, for this school year.
If I could make a motion, please?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay.
The next, I will quickly over that, you have attachments for the budget update. Mr. Hyde had a previously planned trip scheduled, so we do have a budget subcommittee meeting on Tuesday that we can further clarify any questions you may have, but you have, I will tell you that there's lots of projects in the queue, lots of things going on. Our tech audit is going on right now, the signage project going on, we have a whole list of things in process. But you have the report, do you have any questions that I can answer, or we can hold them until Tuesday?
I'm going to hold them.
I'm going to hold, yeah, but yeah.
All right. Okay, next up, I wanted to let the committee know that we continue with our Alice training, and I had asked our SRO to give us an update on the Alice training, and actually, he was supposed to come last month, and he was at a mandatory training, but I'd like to call Derek Cafcot to the podium, and he will review with you where we are at with our Alice training.
Good evening, everybody, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Dr. Bailey, like Dr. Bailey said, we had planned on updating you last month. I was at a mandatory training as part of police reform and whatnot, so I apologize for that. So update on our Alice training, and for some of the committee who may not have been when we began this several years ago. Alice, it's a nice topic, so we're going to get into how Alice strategies have been implemented, and how the staff have been trained, and what the children have been learning in school. Define the Alice strategies, know when to use them, and the kids have been practicing Alice strategies during hands-on training as well as the staff. So for anyone who doesn't know, Alice stands for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. You don't necessarily go in that order, that's simply just the acronym. They are not a checklist, and they are not sequential. At any time during any event, whether it's in school, out of school, they may choose to evacuate, or they may choose to lockdown and barricade. Others may choose to counter, should an intruder enter their space, and not every, not every situation is the same. So for your alert, that could be a PA announcement, you could get a text message, a phone call, you could hear sounds of danger, or actually observe the danger yourself. Prior to becoming the SRO several years back, this is my seventh, seventh school year, we simply did lockdown, and that's not appropriate in this current day and age. So lockdown, you close the door, now it's an advanced lockdown where you barricade the room, you spread out, you plan an alternate escape route now, you're not just waiting for help, and then you're going to prepare to counter if necessary. Inform, communicate the location, direction in real time of the intruder, information should be clear, direct language, plain language, we've been practicing that with staff the last few years. Real-time information is important and for everybody in the building to make their life-saving decisions. Countering, countering is not fighting. Countering is focused on actions that create noise, movement, distance, and distraction with the goal of reducing the intruder's ability to focus. And evacuate, this is your primary goal in any situation. Evacuate into a safer area, takes occupants out of harm's way, and it prevents occupants from coming into contact with any intruders. So staff training, since the 2018, 2019 school year, they have had online training through the Alice program, they continue that training with updates every year. We have been doing Alice drills during professional development with staff, no students, created designated rally points and practice getting to those rally points, notified our neighbors prior to evacuating. So we've done drills the last few years with staff. This year, we actually did one in the end of April with staff and students, simply evacuation. So our Alice strategies sort of maximize the safety during an event, preparation leads to peace of mind, confidence, and more successful outcomes. Student training, all student training is age-appropriate, and lesson plans are done with their teachers. Elementary school children are simply taught to listen to their teachers and follow their direction, and drills are geared toward educating the students, not scaring them. All drills are notified in advance, they're in advance, they're no surprise drills, parents are notified through FYIs and monthly notifications. So these Alice strategies, our kids, on a percentage basis, on 180 days, are only with us about 16% of the time compared to over 80% of the time outside of school. So these strategies will carry them through their life, whether at the mall, movie theater, or restaurant, or any other situation they may be in. This Not Scared, our prepared book, pre-K through three, probably fourth grade, because we have the fourth grade in the elementary school learn through this storybook. Our fourth through sixth graders, they've learned how to define the Alice strategies with their teachers, learn when to use them, and they practice them during hands-on training. One of the biggest things is for them to learn their situational awareness, where are their exits at all times, whether they're home, whether they're at school, or whether they're at a restaurant with their families. Same thing for the seventh and the eighth grade. During any event, I know, not for police so much, but for schools, the accountability, we want to know where every kid is in every moment of the day, but during a situation, police, emergency people, emergency response, we don't really care for accountability right away. In any event that's ever happened in the history of this country, zero, zero children have been lost. Nobody has run out in the woods, run two miles down the road, and never been found again. So yes, we have, we have sites that the kids know where to go to, the staff know where to go to, and accountability for the school, but most important to us is that in any event that the building is as empty as possible, and that's, and that's what we're trying to get to right here. Parent notification lessons are scheduled and are included in family newsletters. In this year's school drills, they were scheduled in advance, and parents were notified prior. What's next? Staff training will continue, both online and hands-on training during professional development. Returning staff and new staff will get the same training, and we will put staff and students going forward, now that we've started, with kids. We'll put them in designated areas such as the cafeteria and conduct drills without disrupting lunch, so prior to lunch, grade level, bring them to the CAF, show them where the exits are, and what they could possibly do in the event they were in the cafeteria at the time. Creating some artificial quote-unquote danger areas, so in an evacuation, whether it's a fire drill or an Alice drill, we want teachers and kids to know where their secondary, tertiary exits could be, so we would say, this is a danger area, find another exit. It's, it's common that as humans, we come in a door, we want to leave the same door, and that may not be possible, whether it's a fire emergency or any other emergency. Options-based training is what Alice is, gives them options, gives the staff options, gives the kids options, it's a life skill that our children will have for a lifetime. And these eighth-grade classes moving forward is the first eighth grade. Prior to this, prior to this year, our kids were the only ones going to Old Colony that didn't practice Alice. So when they went to Old Colony, the freshman class or any new sophomore classes would have an Alice drill, they would have the education, and they would do an actual drill. I've been there for those. Akushnet eighth graders going into Old Colony never had that. Next year, they will have that. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, and as you said, these are life skills. It's nice that our kids will go to places and have that situational awareness and know where the exits are, and just be able to look around to see those things in case there is some type of an emergency or incident. But I wanted to let you know that we continue with Alice. Does anybody have any questions for Officer Cafcot or for myself?
How often are staff and kids doing these drills and getting training throughout the course of the year?
Well, they're doing, they're doing in-class training a few times, a few times a year. So starting next year, we've already had those conversations with Mr. Gary and the principals about at least a couple of PEs, hands-on. This year, we did one hands-on PE a half-day in each school. I was, I was fortunate enough to have a friend of mine who works for a window and door company, so there were some teachers that had asked the last couple of years, how would I even break a window? So they had donated five or six windows, and both schools, we, I brought in some hammers, I brought in some other different tools that they could use, throw in their emergency buckets, and they gave it a shot, and they figured out that they could actually break a window and get out if they had to. So moving forward with the staff, some emergency hands-on stuff, I think they like the hands-on stuff, and then tabletop exercises, and then, like I said, with the kids, putting them in different places, it won't be, take that much time, but cafeteria, I think, would be one good one, and keep, just keep going with it, and keep learning every year as they go through here, and it's a life skill, it really is.
I think our students know how to get out of the building on a fire drill, we have them all the time, and growing up, we had fire drills all the time. I think we'd like to get to the point where when we have an evacuation drill, or an Alice training or a drill, the kids know it like the back of their hand, but as Officer Cafcot training or a drill, the kids know it like the back of their hand, but as Officer Capcar said, these are situational, the situations constantly change, and that's where the classroom training is going to help as well.
And we have designated some sites for them to go to. I'm married to those ideas, if there are better places for them to go. We'll tweak these things. We had some feedback from the fire department, the fire department was here to observe. We'll tweak a couple of things as far as where they go and how they get there. It's ongoing, it's ongoing, and we'll change things as things adapt, but keep working with these kids. And the lessons are designed not to scare them. There may be some kids that have a little bit of trepidation, and the school adjustment counselors have worked with some of those kids, so even in fire drills, there are kids that really, really have some anxiety about fire drills, and I don't think it's good training to scare kids. So we know who these kids are, and we talk to them in advance, and they call them up in advance, and we work with them individually, so.
Any questions?
I have two questions, I'm not sure who can answer them for me. So from a policy standpoint, should there be a policy that the Cushingit district has about, I don't know if we have them for fire drills, I can't remember, but should we add Alice drills as well into policies of how many we're supposed to have a year or anything like that?
I mean, we can certainly look at that, the policy, we can look at the fire drill policy.
Yeah, I think, I think there is.
We can certainly look at that.
If we could just make a note about that. And then, secondly, from a budget standpoint, do our classrooms need, you had mentioned, safety kits, is there something that we can do from a budget standpoint to make sure every single classroom is geared with whatever they need? I know we can't go into detail, but.
Yeah, we've looked at some things and we're ordering some things for them for next year. I'm looking into some other things to add to that bucket. And I know, like, I know things make us feel safe, but really, it's their decision-making and getting that information and training on. Basically, we'll train, we'll train, and it'll just make them calmer in anything. I mean, I say this all the time, I date myself when I say Sears in the Dartmouth Mall, but now it's a grocery store. If there's something going on in the mall, at the movie theater, and you're down at Aldi's, you're not going to go into a closet or anything like that, you're going to leave. And that's what we're trying to instill in these kids and in the staff. Doesn't make any sense to just lock yourself in a room and wait for help, because help could be, you know, especially if there's nothing going on at that end of the building, it doesn't make any sense. If something's happening up here, and they're in the gymnasium, they're in the caf, I mean, they could be, they could be at a country whip before five minutes through the woods. So I think it just makes sense for these kids as they move on to high school, they move on to college, they graduate, they go other places. And again, like I said, if you figure it out, and I gave eight hours a day for 180 days, that's only 16.4% of the time of the year. We need to help them for those other 80-plus percent of the time that they're not with us.
So from a budget standpoint, if there's anything that we need to talk about, to try to fit in for the budget or add to the budget now that we're sort of revamping what's needed in a school these days, I think we should bring that up at our next budget subcommittee. John, do you agree?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
I'm glad you used the term "revamping."
Revamping.
I think that's right. Excellent.
Thank you, Officer Capcar.
Yeah, that brings us into the next item on our agenda, which, given the unfortunate circumstances lately, that just seemed to be continuing all too rapidly, that it was important to talk about school safety as a committee and think about, is it time? You know, is it time to look again at our school, give a close look at the infrastructure here, is it adequate? And so anyway, I just wanted to bring that on, Mr. Tebs and I thought it was important to talk about this, and so we put this on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, I think what prompted the thought, obviously, and it's embarrassing to say, is, you know, you got another tragedy, and it takes that to kind of move us in that direction, but I had a meeting and discussion with Dr. Bailey, I think it had probably been some time, I don't even know how long it's been since we've looked at the infrastructure of the school and considered the safety of the buildings themselves. What prompted me, I guess, was thinking about just how easy I felt it was to gain entry. So if I wanted to, I could get into the buildings rather quickly. I feel much better, obviously, having a resource officer, but I think it's unreasonable for us to, you know, assume that that would solve any emergency.
Prevent the kind of tragedies we're seeing these days?
And I, well, no, I just think it's unreasonable to assume that a resource officer could, you know, necessarily respond and handle that. I don't even know if they're equipped to, I don't know on the process, but I just feel like the response time, no matter how good it is, is just not fast enough. And so that's kind of what was going through my mind and making me feel uncomfortable. And I don't know the answer, but I felt as though we're not in a position to sit around and wait for others to make those decisions for us, or because this is going on for how many years, decades at this point, whereas I think the people in this room have the intellect and the capacity and certainly the power to do something about it. So, you know, I thought that at the very least, from an exploration standpoint, we should consider as a committee hiring some sort of security consultant to come and look at the infrastructure around a district, it'd be really simple, we have two buildings. But really, I don't know if it's as simple as a SWOT analysis or how they knew it, but I mean, really critically think about, you know, hey, here's a list of, you know, 10, 12, 15, you know, real weaknesses, and as a committee, we might say, well, you know, let's start with one, two, or three, and think about, you know, the most effective ways that we can make these buildings safer for our kids to potentially delay that point of entry for anybody who wanted to get in, thus giving, you know, the first responders time to actually get here. So that was kind of my thoughts, that was what provoked it, so. I don't know if anybody else wants to add or weigh in.
I just think that's a great idea, if that resource is out there that can come in and do an assessment, I think that would be a really good idea. I've also, since the last tragedy, and that seems to, we say that part too frequently, have like been thinking like, what can we do, what can we do, and I don't have the answers, and so I think that is a great start.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think we, you know, we have to look at how we can make this happen, we have a budget workshop next week, I think we can kind of look into the feasibility cost-wise of doing something like this, but I do think, I think it makes total sense, at least, to do some due diligence and to get a professional to come in and give us some information, so, and that we can respond to from there.
I don't know what the costs would be, you know, and I don't know what they're going to come up with. So if they came up with something and then we have a cost, at least the people in this town could, you know, make a decision on that. But as of now, it's just, you know, I mean, talking about it, it's not going to get anything done, so that would be, I guess, my, if I were to put forth a motion, I would say I'd put forth a motion for this committee to, I'd say, seek out two or three different estimates on consulting, different consulting, security companies, to see, and by the way, I'd like this to be something that would be done in a timely fashion. I'd like it to move quickly, you know, we've got a fall town meeting that I'd like to have, you know, something prepared for the people of this town to consider, because I know how long these things can take, so.
I'll second that.
I'm speaking opposition to the motion, in the sense that any day now, hopefully, Congress will pass some legislation dealing with protections with guns and things like that, and one in that, and a bill that which may survive would be school safety. And we should probably, you know, look at what bill comes down and what funds will be available, what they're putting in this whole thing, which probably would then come down to the Department of Education, you know, to put some protocols, rules, regulations, whatever they want to do on school safety. So I think, you know, and this will be happening during the summer, it's not like, you know, putting it off till next February. So I think if we get ahead of the ball, we're basically just spinning our wheels, because some resources are going to be coming through Congress, and I think many times they will focus on the most obvious, most protections that experts are basically will be zeroing in on. We don't have any position of, well, we've got a problem here, we get a consultant, you know, and so forth. You know, I find working with consultants, I've been working with consultants for many years with my professional life, you know, and then sometimes they're not there, or they're not that good.
Well, I think what the motion, though, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Houghcraft, but I think the motion being presented here is just to explore, to look at what a consultant could do for the district. It's not a committing to any one consultant, it's essentially putting out a bid for some proposals and seeing what they would present to us in terms of what they would do and what it would cost, and then we would then react to that. And, you know, depending on what happens at the congressional level, then we can respond to that too, but I think this is being proactive to not delay and to at least be moving forward and being proactive by getting information.
I agree with you, but sometimes a good, it may not necessarily be a good proactive if you're merely duplicating, and because in the mix, sometimes the most obvious protections are getting lost, they get lost in conflict with. So, you know, I basically, if you want to go ahead with exploration of consultants, I don't know if there are any available or any that are good, you know, any time of when you have crises like this or funds available, you know, consultant firms are appearing overnight, you know, some retired superintendent, some retired police officer put on a, you know, a letterhead and they give you $2,000 worth of services and send you a bill for $30,000, that's been my experience. So it's, I'm a little cynical when it comes to.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, for sure.
Which does not necessarily add to the safety of, you know, of this facility. You know, we can go, we can, you know, they'll probably interview everybody and say, you know, what do you think is unsafe? Well, we could basically spend until next February talking about what we feel is unsafe, and then we look at the price tag and to filling it, and that gets lost, where we can zero in on the most obvious, and I think the legislation and then the rules from the Department of Education basically will give us a lot of direction, and then if we get consultants to implement, you know, that would be the road to go.
I would love for Congress to actually put in place some sort of legislation and appropriate funding for the legislation, I just haven't had much faith in that occurring. It's, I mean, this has been decades, this issue has been decades long, and nothing's really changed, except the, you know, the way we're training our kids, you know, with the Alice thing, nothing's really changed. So that's why I felt like we needed to be proactive on it, and yeah, I mean, if something comes down over the next three, six months, and it's great, and there's some, you know, some proof, we have money to move ahead with some of these things, I mean, that's.
All better, right?
Great.
I don't see any downside to this approach from the standpoint of all we're doing is some exploration to see what's out there. Before we would do anything, I think it would be on this committee to evaluate the experience, reputation, right, of any, I've worked with a lot of consultants, some good, some bad, so you kind of sit through that and evaluate the capabilities of what you're working with. But, and if something comes down the pipe, we would adjust course, but it takes a while to even figure out who's out there, what services are available to do, so we should get that going and then make a decision on what to do.
Well, I mean, now that the conversation's been had, I mean, the alternative is to do nothing and keep waiting on, you know, somebody to do it for us, and that hasn't happened.
I have to agree with doing the exploration. I have a feeling that Congress is going to send down these prerequisites that we already have, the double doors to get in, the doors all locked, some of the other things that we have, camera systems, I mean, we have that. I would like to hear from a consultant that is, you know, valuable and knows what they're doing, so obviously, we'll do the research on that to see what else we could do. I mean, there are systems in place now that I've been researching since the tragedy that can be implemented that weren't even there six, seven years ago, and now schools are putting it nationwide. So I would like to see what consultants would say with what we need in addition to what we already have, which, again, there are so many schools in our country that don't even have that double-door entry, that don't even have like a policy about locked doors, so I have a feeling that the federal government's just going to put things in place that we already have. So additional information would be nice.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? All right, so I can't recall if the motion that Mr. Tebs put out got a second.
What is the motion exactly?
Okay, so I make a motion to get two or three estimates from security consultants regards to the safety and the infrastructure of our schools, how we could approve that.
And I'll second that.
And this is just exploring?
Yes.
Getting information?
Correct.
Okay, just to clarify. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We have one opposed.
And just to add to the conversation, I just wanted to let the committee know, I think you already know, but we have increased security, visibility, I've worked very closely with Chief Richmond, and I have to say, Cushingit Police Department, they've been partners all year with us, they come over for various events, we just had a safety day where Cushingit Police, Fire, the Sheriff's Office, they were all here, but the kids are very accustomed to seeing the safety personnel, which has been really, really nice. And in addition to the additional safety measures that we've taken, the one thing that I have stressed to the staff is the thing that we have control over is our relationships with children, being sure that no one is left out, being sure that we strengthen the relationships between peer-to-peer, peer-to-adult. Every student should have an adult who they look up to, who they can trust and go to should there be an issue. The majority of people who have these mass shootings are 18 years old and younger, so therefore, it's crucial in the work that we do. years old and younger. So, so therefore it's crucial in the work that we do to build on these relationships. And we've done a lot of work. You're gonna hear a lot more about that, um, in the next presentation. But, um, I just wanted to thank Mr. Tebs for bringing this up, um, and taking the time to meet with me about this. And, and thank you.
I just want to add one thing. This is not just the school issue. This is a community issue. And therefore, the, in my estimation, the, if you're going in the direction of, of, you know, of, of safety and so forth, it, you know, if a mass shooter, you know, if kids will just go down to one of our churches, they're open. They don't have, they don't have resource people, they don't have anybody standing there. Uh, it can happen anywhere. It can go to, you know, to one of the ice cream places when there are 30, 40 people standing around. So it is a, you know, so we, we can make our schools forts and we can have them, you know, uh, you know, with chain link fences and, and sensors and this, that and the other, and barbed wire across the, across the, uh, you know, greens and everything else. But our community is not any safer. So I think, you know, if we're talking about, we should, you know, our enthusiasm, and I appreciate your enthusiasm, to transfer that type of enthusiasm to a, a, a townwide community issue. Um, maybe part of, of always advocating when I was on the Finance Committee, a, uh, set, you know, another five-year, uh, another five-year plan or something like that, uh, where, but this could be part of it to make, you know, how the question can be safer. We're one of the, by the way, one of the safest in, in the country, in, in the, in the state of Massachusetts first with gun safety. So we're not in a, we're not in a state, you know, Florida and Texas or, you know, or one of those other free gun states. Uh, so, but if you want a feeling of safety, we should be basically, it should be a community effort, uh, and a community awareness more than anything else, you know. And so I just want to, you know, I see the town administrator here, uh, and maybe, I don't, uh, and I, you know, it's like, maybe you want to communicate that type of, uh, how I feel rather than just making a little place on middle roads, a fort, and the whole town is, uh, being totally ignored. So that's why I wanted to bring a different perspective to what we're, we're talking about.
John, I understand where you're coming from. However, in this committee, we are responsible for the school.
I understand.
So let's start with the school and then one day when one of us becomes a selectman, we can go and worry about that. Um, or, you know, we can talk to the selectmen regarding a, a, a community-wide thing. Um, but for, for this point, I really think the school should be focused on right now, and then we can move on to bigger, bigger things later on down the road.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I have one?
You may, yes.
Okay. You can see that we have a sense of belonging survey results. That's actually woven into, um, the evaluation, the mid-cycle evaluation presentation. And I will be sharing some information with you alongside Angie Rigori and Kim Bencourt. Um, but in your packets, you have a packet that looks like this. And as we talked about at the beginning of the year, all of the agenda items, um, that we've talked about all year, I've been putting them in the place of where they kind of align to each goal, so that it would, you know, hopefully make sense. And this is, um, you know, to remind you that this is superintendents who have been, um, been in the role longer than three years, four years and more, go to a two, it's recommended a two-year cycle, which is what we're doing. So this is the end of year one. Um, so we wanted to give you that mid-cycle update. And then what I will do after we go over everything today is I will be emailing you a Google form, which won't be as formal, because this is a formative evaluation and the summit it will be next year, um, just to get some readings from the committee. So, um, moving on, ladies.
Ready.
Okay.
So the first thing that we really want to reiterate, because I know this comes up when we talk about the superintendent's goals, the superintendent's goals are really the basis for the work that guides the district initiatives. And it's really the basis for the work that we all do as department heads and, um, leaders of the district. So in this presentation, you're going to see work that's being done by teachers, by administrators, that we share towards Dr. Bailey's goals. Um, and hopefully it will give you that quantification, I think, that everybody's been looking for, um, and that more concrete data that you'll be able to really look at. Um, our teams provide the data to us. We provide that to the superintendent in form of this report. Um, and that goes towards her goals and progress towards achieving the overall district goal. The superintendent's goals are really the guide for all the work that we all do. Um, our teachers, our faculty, our custodial staff, our business staff, um, and district leaders. So we do utilize the superintendent's goals as the basis for our goal writing. And as you hear through this presentation, the menu that we've given to staff to choose, um, the goals that they want to be working on.
Okay. So the first SMART goal, which is two-year student learning goal, um, from 21 to 23 school years, all student will receive consistent access to grade level work with targeted scaffolds and interventions to make grade level standards accessible and measured by the implementation of a district educator goals menu with measurable goal options in the areas of literacy, math, science, or social studies.
Good evening. Um, so here we have, uh, for the educator goals, they, um, always select a student learning goal and then a professional practice goal. Um, so this was the first year that we've ever kind of, um, supplied a menu for educators to select from, so that we're all kind of rowing in the same direction, um, in work, in working on similar goals that are aligned to the strategy and the superintendent's goals. Um, there was some, you know, custom tailoring as these goals didn't necessarily match for every educator in the district. Um, but these were really, um, some academic choices for, for educators to choose. And they could focus on a subject area of choice. Um, and, and the data that we were asking teachers to provide is data that came from district measures, district assessments, and common assessment, common assessments. Um, for the professional practice goal, there was also, um, a bit of choice involved, um, fostering a sense of belonging and partnerships with students and families. That's a big push this year, coming back from COVID and the Department of Education acceleration roadmap. Um, so an opportunity for, um, the professional practice goal to focus on sense of belonging or to focus on the implementation of some of the new curriculum programs that we had. Teachers were kind of already going to be doing that anyways. And, um, we thought, you know, probably a good idea for them to really make this a, a goal and own it.
So this was the first time that our teachers actually looked at a menu and we had a lot of alignment in the district. Lots of times in previous years, you know, a teacher could have decided, I want to do this for my goal. And this team could have decided, I want to do this team goal. And it didn't always necessarily align to the district strategy or to the superintendent's goals. So while the teachers were working on pretty much everything that's listed, they really tried to highlight it and pick, and they had choice into one thing that they really wanted to focus on, on their evaluation. So goal two is my professional practice goal is to develop and implement lessons and activities from the South Regional Consultancy and continue to build my capacity as an effective leader within the Cushinget Public School District. And in this packet, you'll see on my second goal, and actually the next slide, highlights all of the, um, professional development that I've had. But more specifically, it's listed in the packet with all of the dates.
I hope we're hearing peanuts.
I think it's a book.
Oh, it's the clock in that classroom.
I'm like, you're Charlie Brown.
Yeah, me too. Um, as you know, I had 10 monthly Old Colony Roundtable meetings with my regional group of superintendents, and we always have a PD, um, during the, the meeting. Uh, we've had ongoing meetings with Commissioner O'Reilly, especially during COVID, um, MASC, um, webinars and consults. Uh, we have our Regional Consultancy group meetings with the superintendent group that I'm in. And it's not just superintendents from the region, but that's where we go over problems of practice and we're able to work out problems together as a group. Uh, we've had, Pete, I've had PD on team building. I attend legislative meetings, MASSS webinars and conferences. Um, several years in a row now, I've gone to the Women's Educational Leadership Network Conference. DESI sponsors many webinars and trainings and MasQ. And those are just the highlights right there. Like I said, everything is listed with the dates in this packet. So for my next goal, it's a district improvement goal. During, uh, you know, this year and next year, we will foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students and families as measured by student and family surveys and attendance data. And this, this particular goal was extremely important to us, uh, especially during COVID. Um, and it was really important with kids being out of school and only in school for some of the time, to really focus on the SEL. So we're gonna talk about that a bit more.
So again, with the acceleration roadmap that came down from the Department of Education, um, they had recommended a survey that came from the New Teacher Project. Um, and so that was the survey that we had used and vetted through our Wellness Committee, um, which included parents and, uh, teachers, educators, um, community, um, counselors. So we had a, we had a, we had a well-vetted survey and we actually did tweak it a little bit, uh, for our audience. But, um, the families from grades K to eight were invited to take the survey and students in grades three to eight took a, uh, took a student survey. And we did this to gauge whether families have what they need to connect, um, and share feedback with staff and to gather information about, um, students' sense of belonging. And we conducted the surveys at the beginning of the school year, well, um, late fall in November, and, um, again, just recently, this past week. So the surveys had roughly 25 questions on them, um, and it was a lot to really focus on. So we selected a few to kind of pull from and focus on this year. Uh, this was from the family survey. And on the left, you'll see the fall, uh, results. And on the right there is the spring. Um, and the question was, I can use the information the school provides me to help my children improve academically. And, um, we took this survey information and brought it to the leadership team. The leadership team brought it to the, the staff in, in both buildings. And, you know, we really kind of made this a focus to try to get information to families that can help students improve.
And you saw a lot of data going home this year, um, as a result of the assessments and really user-friendly reports to help families understand what that data meant.
This is from the student survey from grades three to five. And the question was, there's at least one adult in my school that I can talk to about how I am doing. Um, and we saw an ever-so-slight increase from the fall to the spring. Um, and we, you know, would like to continue to see this increase, um, and have more students feel as though they have an adult that they can talk to. And this is, um, and I'll, I'll talk about this a little bit later, but this is a big focus for the, for the Wellness Committee and our, um, student support team and, and for all of us really. Um, and these were the results for the same question for grades six to eight. And it's really pretty flat, a slight decline in the, um, in the, the feeling that that statement is true.
I just wanted to add, um, one thing on this slide because I spend a lot of time with our clinical staff, our school adjustment counselors, our school psychologists. And our middle school kids, we have to keep in mind that they were our fifth graders when we closed in March. You know, we kind of half joke, but half serious, like this would be a really good study group because I talk to kids almost every day. And some kids, even this point in the year, don't really feel a strong connection to the school because it may, this may be their first year here. They were fifth graders, but either chose to homeschool or they did, um, remote. So I think it's really telling that the data is so flat. And I think, you know, it's a real direct result of our middle schoolers still, I don't think, feeling totally connected after being, you know, some of them gone for two years. So this is almost their first year of middle school, even though they're third, their third year on our roster.
And just listening to my colleagues in the region, there's definitely an uptick in discipline and behaviors. We see a slight, uh, uptick at the middle school here. Um, but again, going back to COVID, our students did not have the structure that they were accustomed to year after year after year. It was totally different. Some kids perhaps got into bad habits. Um, it was hard, hard for some kids to come back to school. So, you know, this isn't something that, you know, changes immediately overnight. This is going to be a multi-year task for us to get this where we need it to be.
Yes. And, um, so we can see from the results that we have work to do there. And, um, our Wellness Committee is really helping to guide that work and has a lot of great things coming down the pipeline. As far as chronic absenteeism goes, so the state defines chronic absenteeism as students missing at least 10% of the days enrolled for the year. Um, and there's a little asterisk there because this year is unique. It's always been for years, 10% um, of the days absent. And this year, they've, the state has increased it to 20% because these numbers include, uh, the COVID absences. So, you know, we would have just, um, statewide really, had a lot of chronic absenteeism if they, if they kept that number at 10%. So, um, here's the data from the 2018, 19 school year through this school year to date. Um, we currently have one student at ADS who is chronically absent at the 20% rate and four students at FMS who are chronically absent.
And we're very well aware of these individual students and we have plans for them. And I will say that our clinical staff, along with the nursing staff, does a fabulous job of outreach, um, constantly on the phone with these families, uh, to try to get the students into school.
Yeah. The nurses make daily calls, um, to families and then our clinical staff do follow-up if we see that there's a pattern or there's been an uptick in attendance issues.
And I think our attendance was actually not too, too bad during COVID because we had a lot of extra staff making these phone calls to our students throughout the time. So kids were coming in.
Yep. Um, despite the pandemic, we've always kept attendance as a high priority. We want to make sure that the more kids are in school, um, the more that they're gonna learn. So we want to make sure that attendance is a focus, not just for the district staff, but for families as well. Um, Wellness Committee, we talked a lot about this. I think over the last couple of years, we really wanted to launch an attendance campaign. I know that was part of one of Dr. Bailey's superintendent goals. Um, we really felt that due to the fact that we still had, um, COVID issues, we still were struggling with COVID absences, that we shifted gears somewhat and really looked at those students who had the chronic absenteeism and focused on individual plans for those students rather than doing a full district initiative. Um, counselors at both the elementary and middle schools have put these initiatives, initiatives in place. And they have practices to plan, um, in place to support student attendance for these individual students as well as other students that may not be at the chronically absent stage, but may have an increase in attendance issues. So this is a great example of one of the elementary ones. Um, we have a student who really struggles coming to school in the morning. Um, each day that he attends, a piece of the turtle shell gets colored in. And once the shell is fully colored, then he gets some kind of reward. And that's, you know, something that this student and the counselor have worked out. It may be, um, having lunch with a preferred peer. It may be having special time with, with a favorite teacher. It may be some other kind of incentive within the building. But for this particular student, this is really helping him, um, be successful in his attending of school. Middle school's a little bit different. Um, we do weekly lunch bunches and, you know, these are run by the counselors. And there's a variety of different topics and different activities that happen during lunch bunches. It's a very much a social skills building type of group. Uh, they do take on different topics, um, different scenarios and really get kids talking and comfortable, um, in social situations. So some of the issues we see at middle school are school phobia, school anxiety. Um, things get a little more challenging at middle school. You have multiple teachers. The workload is a little bit more difficult. So we generally see those associated with, um, some kind of school anxiety. And they take that on at lunch bunch. And for some kids, just having that connection and that group, they do look forward to that in the school day. That's been great motivation. That's been great motivation for them to come in. We have reward programs similar to the elementary. It's not always a turtle shell with our older kids. But you can see in one of the pictures that a student was able to get a reward of spending time with the therapy dog, which are our COVID dogs that have recently become certified. And then on the right is just a picture of one of our lunch bunch groups who were eating lunch outside that day with a teacher. And it's a great group of kids who, you know, some of them do struggle with coming to school. One of the other initiatives that we've been talking about this year and a part of Dr. Bailey's goals with community involvement and really strengthening our partnerships, was looking at joining Special Olympics. So we were able to do that this year. I had several meetings with our local Special Olympics contact person. He shared a lot of materials. We've really had a chance to look at all the different programs that Special Olympics offers, and I reviewed those with some of our staff as well. Although Special Olympics really is primarily known for athletics, our district really doesn't have students that qualify for that level of athletic competition. So our focus really is more on inclusivity and equity for all. That's done through clubs, athletics. It's done through different programs and curriculum in the school day. And the plan next year is to partner with the elementary PE teacher to see if there is some opportunity to build in some type of athletics. You know, we just had the big Special Olympics in Dartmouth a few weeks ago that was highly promoted through the press. We don't have kids that meet that level of criteria to really be part of our motor development therapy-type day. But we're going to try to replicate something on a smaller scale in Acushnet where we can really get that same Special Olympics feel. We've already started to really put some things in place. We have some wonderful clubs at the middle school that are incorporating some of those focuses that Special Olympics has. And again, it's really about inclusivity and equity, more so than just athletics. I'm really excited to share that on June 18th, a couple of us are taking 20 students from Acushnet Elementary to Noam Surfing. And this is surf therapy for students with disabilities. And again, looking at our kind of equity and acceptance for all kids, this is a surfing program for kids of all abilities. So we are going from five to eight to South Shore Beach. We've invited families to join us, and we've had a great response. We'll be providing burgers and hot dogs. And Lisa Cavalo and I are going to schlup our grills. And we're going to make a night event. So we, oh, she's still here? Hi, we're so excited. I think at least once a day, we're emailing each other, like, oh, my God, I'm so excited. And I think our families are excited, but a little unsure of what's going to happen. So we wanted to include some pictures. We've had some students-
It's an excellent program.
Yeah, we've had some students who have gone before. And I've got some really great feedback from them.
Actually, there's a student in one of the pictures who is an Acushnet student.
Yes, he's in the promotional materials. So, yeah. So we're super excited about that. And this is a new community partner, you know, for our district. This is somebody that, you know, Lisa thankfully reached out to. And now we have a really nice, strong community partner for something really fun for our students and families.
That's great.
So the Wellness Committee meets multiple times a year, at least four. And every year, we kind of reconvene a new committee. So we will be looking for new community members next school year. And this year, the committee members felt really passionate about these topics. So finding a bullying prevention in SEL curriculum. We've kind, we, so the elementary school has selected Second Steps Bullying Prevention Program. And the grades from five to eight, they're looking at Trails to Wellness, which touches on all of the Castle competencies. And we're also looking for a specific bullying prevention program here at the middle school. We're in that process right now. For social-emotional learning, they're still looking to strengthen relationships peer-to-peer, students-to-staff. We're working a lot on building in advisory time during the middle school days. And then another new feature will be an SEL screener. So we're in the process of, I think we've kind of narrowed it down to the Sabre screener. But that would be a three-minute screener. And it's designed for students K to, I think, K to 12 or maybe even beyond that. And it's a risk assessment for social-emotional and behavioral challenges. And, you know, it just kind of pulls a little more information to clarify where there may be work to be done on an individual, class level, school level, grade-level basis. And then the Positive Behavioral Intervention System. I know that was presented on earlier this year, but there's just a lot of good things happening in the schools with recognizing positive behavior. The middle school recently had a basketball game with a G League Celtics player and alumni of actually a Christian public schools. And that was just great fun. And the entire school population was able to attend. And the students who had earned a PBIS award were able to play in a staff versus student basketball game. And it was, it was really a great time. It was amazing. And so there's things like that happening. Monthly AES is having, is recognizing students monthly. Community members are coming in and recognizing students. And students are getting treats and visitors, special visitors, and things like that. So it's always good to recognize the positive things that are happening.
And for Goal Four, to continue to provide, and another district improvement goal, to continue to provide a safe and healthy learning environment that prioritizes the well-being of every Acushnet Public Schools community member during the global health pandemic. So as you know, the past couple of years, this has been a huge focus. And there's many, many initiatives that has addressed, that has continued to address this goal, such as COVID updates at all of our school committee meetings, weekly COVID updates to families. So families have been, you know, truly informed about where our numbers are at. We have bi-weekly COVID crisis response team meetings, which is inclusive of our community partners, the Board of Health, the Fire Chief, administrators from the school department, our nurses. As you know, we've had test-and-stay program, our home testing options. We started a new partnership this year, or strengthened it, with the Bristol County Sheriff's Office. They had the COVID dogs, which was a mitigation effort for COVID strategy. And it was so successful with what was happening and the joy that they were bringing to our staff and students that the dogs actually became certified as therapy dogs. So we will continue that program next school year, them coming in once a week into our buildings. We have, of course, our cleaning protocols. As you know, we've done presentations on ESAR grant spending. We hired building-based subs, so we did a realignment of some staff. Instead of getting random subs during COVID, we actually have the same subs in, you know, two in each building who work and know the kids, know the building. That was a change, and that has been something that we decided to keep on doing because it's something that was very positive. It's very hard to find subs sometimes at a last-minute notice. And we actually have found very good, consistent substitutes for both of our buildings. You heard about Alice Staff and Student Training, the parent and community outreach that we've done. Our neighbors know, you know, when those drills are happening or will be happening. The community doesn't necessarily know all of the details, just for security reasons. We had a United Way food donation. We gave away a ton of food during the April break that students were able to take home. We have started to do some incident response planning with the Bristol County Sheriff's Office. I met with Colonel Gavigan, and we have forming a team here to do some incident response training. And I think I mentioned our Community Safety Day, as well as the K-9 demonstrations that we recently had. So that sums it up. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, so I will send you a Google form. It'll be pretty quick and easy. You would send it back to Kelly, and we take it from there. And that's considered a formative evaluation. Next year is a summative evaluation, which is more intense, okay? The last thing I have that I just thought was worth mentioning, we have four students who are Acushnet alum from Fairhaven High School who graduated in the top 10. Number 10, we had Ava Peppin. Number nine, Nicholas Grace. Number six, Leila Almeda. And number two, Mason Forsier. So I thought it was important to mention that when I looked in the newspaper prints, these articles on the area high schools in the top 10. And I, you know, was able to see that we had some Acushnet students. So we were well-represented in that top 10. So I wanted to congratulate all of the students and especially our Acushnet Wildcats.
That's great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. All right, any other reports or updates that our school committee members want to communicate to the public before we move on?
We have a number of communications noted there that were in your packet for you to review at your own convenience. We do have executive session this evening. So we're going to break to go to executive session. Then we are going to come back after executive session to do some public votes based on our discussion. So if I could have a motion, please, to adjourn our public meeting at this time to move into executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do you need a roll call, Kelly?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We won't let you make you talk anymore. All right, thank you.
So moved, second.
Are we going to do our roll call, right?
Trying.
Mrs. Gomes?
Oh, you're here. I thought I had to do that.
No, we're back in open session.
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Halcroft?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowd?
Yes. Okay, the first motion that we need, I'm going to propose we make tonight is approval of the memorandum of understanding for the collective bargaining agreement with the teachers for a three-year period from September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
And we need a roll call? Okay, so all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
No.
Mr. Kelly gives a no.
It passes with objection.
It passes with one object.
The motion passes?
Thank you.
With opposition?
One opposition, one abstain.
Correct.
Okay, and the second matter is a motion to a number of sections. I'm going to make three motions here. First is a motion to approve the PRP, Performance, for Dr. Bailey's contract in the amount of $3,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Like to make another motion here with regard to the addendum to the employment agreement between the Acushnet School Committee and Dr. Bailey for Section 5 related to the cellphone. That's a motion to approve that addendum.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then-
Just for clarification, it includes all of the language?
Yes, the language there is fine.
Okay.
And then the second motion, please, is a motion to actually table and hold the addendum related, or the amendment related to Section 3 on salary. All those in favor? Or a motion, please, to approve that?
Motion to table.
To table.
Second.
And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just to provide some explanation, Dr. Bailey, on that, we just would like a little bit of time to just do a little bit of research around comps.
Sure.
And that's why we're tabling that for now, but to be addressed soon.
At our next.
At our next meeting. We're having the budget meeting next week, so we can address it then.
Okay. I'll be talking to our business manager to get some information that we've requested.
Okay.
So with that, if I could have a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening?
Good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.